Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, December 18th, 2020-24. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Can I ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeitner? We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, and December 13th, 2024 at all schools on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed in Section 12B of the Act, and whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. Pending or anticipated litigation matters covered by attorney-client privilege, HIP investigation, attorney advice on proposed confidential agreements. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, hold on. Personnel matter. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will you should return from closed session at around 7:15.
And no formal action will be taken in closed session.
We're going to call the meeting back to order. The board has returned from executive session. And we do have actions to take. I have something to read. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the previously provided proposal with policy fine to provide confidential and attorney-client privileged insurance archaeology services not to exceed $4,900.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. Bora. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The first is public board of education meeting minutes from November 20th, 2024.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. Bora. Are there any comments, questions? Any...all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions, recusals? Okay, seeing none. The closed session meeting minutes from November 20th, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePain. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, recusals?
Abstained pertaining to the superintendent goals.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our student board members' report. Welcome back.
Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We'll start off with Mill Lake Elementary School's report. Mill Lake School continues to thrive as a vibrant community filled with excitement, learning, and meaningful contributions. December has brought a season of joy and activity living up to all our expectations. The month began with a PTO holiday shop held from December 2nd to 4th, where students thoughtfully selected gifts for family and friends. The third grade student council has been hard at work this month. They organized an intergenerational service project spreading kindness and cheer by creating New Year's cards for senior citizens in the township. These heartfelt cards were distributed to residents of a multi-level care community. Additionally, the student council launched Mill Lake's first-ever cereal box challenge. This exciting initiative is underway with collections continuing through January 31st. Thank you for your support in making this event a success. The challenge culminates on February 14th with the students and staff setting up a domino challenge throughout Mill Lake School. As the holidays wind down, Mill Lake participated in various themed events and activities, including Toys for Tots, a holiday song practice, and 12 Days of Holiday Fun. They're thrilled to end the year with celebration, cheer, and a strong sense of community. Finally, they will close the month with their annual Mill Lake Winter Sing-Along on Friday, December 20th, featuring a very special guest, Olaf. Mill Lake School continues to shine as a place where learning, joy, and togetherness come together for all.
And now we're going to be moving on to Woodland Elementary School. In celebration of Thanksgiving and the Macy's Day Parade, many of their teachers and students engaged in fun and challenging STEM projects. Some of their classes even designed, created, and marched in their very own parade. The November Growth Log Lottery winners were rewarded with additional recess time with Dr. Seda. Mr. Dale and student council sponsored fun and exciting holiday spirit days during the month of December. The Woodland Mill Lake PTO sponsored holiday shop for their school. Students had an opportunity to shop for their families and friends. In conjunction with this fun holiday time event, Mrs. Newcombe and the fifth grade character crew coordinated gift wrapping. Students and staff participated in Woodland School's annual Deck the Halls Door Decorating Contest. This year, classroom doors incorporated the school theme, "We Grow Together." A panel of judges voted on their favorite doors. The winner from each grade level will earn a prize of a movie and popcorn. We are happy to announce Woodland Schools 2024 Governor's Educators of the Year: Mrs. Erica Emmons, Teacher of the Year; Mrs. Karen Kui, Educational Professional of the Year; and Mr. Matthew Verdun, Educational Support Staff of the Year. Congratulations to all the staff who got awarded.
Next up is Barclaybrook Elementary School. Barclaybrook recognized a student from each classroom who consistently embodied their school's great traits, which are growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. They held an assembly where the great winners from each grade level were announced and honored. One of the most wonderful aspects of the assembly was the way in which all the students cheered for and celebrated the great kid winners. They were truly excited for their classmates who were nominated, which reinforced that all the students are truly great kids. They are also so pleased to share the 2024-2025 Governor's Educator of the Year Award winners for Barclaybrook. Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Yates, Grade Two teacher; Educational Services Professional, Mrs. Barry, BCBA; and Educational Support Staff, Mrs. Zenny, Special Education Paraprofessional. They are so grateful for all that they do for the students at Barclaybrook and are very proud to have them represent the school. Barclaybrook School also hosted their annual Holiday Steammaker Night on December 5th. They were so excited to welcome over 120 families to the event where they participated in holiday-themed coding and maker activities. It was an amazing night for all and a great way to get into the holiday spirit. A huge thank you to the teachers who helped run the evening and to the families who joined us for an evening of fun.
And now we're going to move on to their partner school, Brookside Elementary School. Brookside held their first family night, math night, on December 5th. They had an excellent turnout with over 100 families attending to complete a variety of math challenges. On December 10th, they had their winter concert. The students did an incredible job performing and put on an amazing show. The Brookside Band and Chorus will be performing for the entire Brookside student body on Friday, December 20th during the school day.
Moving on to Oak Tree Elementary School. December has been a month filled with holiday cheer at Oak Tree. Some highlights include their annual 10 Days of Oak Tree, in which each day is a theme from ugly sweaters to flannel to secret snowman. Students shopped at their PTA-sponsored holiday shop, and their Polar Express trip, where kindergarteners carol throughout the building with the big guy in their homemade train. Their holiday gift drive also took place, where hundreds of gifts were donated to surprise their families in need. And lastly, Oak Tree's annual door decorating contest occurred, and winners will be announced this Friday.
And now at Apple Garth, students at Apple Garth are wrapping up their classroom spelling bees in preparation for the school-wide bee which will be held on January 17th. Apple Garth is also wrapping up their annual gift drive to support their school community. The PTA sponsored the holiday shop, which was held on December 9th and 10th. A beautiful winter concert was also performed by Apple Garth's band and chorus on December 11th. The Principal's Book Club for Three Times Lucky by Sheila Turnage will be held tomorrow, December 19th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Samantha Farkas was awarded Teacher of the Year at Apple Garth. Allison Kershis was awarded Educational Service Professional of the Year, and Nancy Agnew was honored as their Educational Support Professional of the Year. Congratulations once again to all of their honorees. Thank you to Apple Garth room parents who are coordinating winter parties over the next three days. Happy winter break from the Apple Garth School.
Next up is Monroe Township Middle School. The First Lady of New Jersey, Mrs. Tammy Murphy, as well as the New Jersey Commissioner of Education, Mr. Kevin Damer, visited the middle school on December 12th. Their state leaders joined MTMS students, staff, and administration in evaluating the school's History Happened Here program, which is currently being piloted by 42 students under the direction of Mrs. Kristi Visaki, Teacher of Social Studies at MTMS. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Nina Schmetterer, MTMS Chorus Director, who has been named the 2024-2025 NJMEA Master Music Teacher for New Jersey. The middle school also has the following concerts coming up, so if you are free to come, please feel free to come and support their talented students. On January 13th, Jazz and Percussion Concert will be taking place, and January 16th, the seventh and eighth grade band concert will be taking place. Lastly, the seventh grade winter dance will be held on February 21st. More information to come out for that after the break.
And now we're moving on to the final school, the Monroe Township's High School. On December 10th, Unified Winter Fest was held, which was a wonderful time for all who attended. On December 12th, the Winter Chorus Concert, where MTHS choir students sang holiday songs and pieces they worked on during class, was also held. It was an amazing event. December 17th was the MTHS's Winter Wonderland, hosted by the Red Cross Club of the school, and included various MTHS clubs transforming the school into a magical experience. There was a frozen meat angry, karaoke, and gingerbread house building, and so much more. Lastly, this week was Winter Spirit Week at the high school, and everyone was looking forward to Pyjama Day on Friday.
Thank you very much. I always say, I think I say this every meeting, but this is my favorite part of the meeting, is hearing all of the updates from all the schools. Thank you guys very much. The next item on our agenda is presentation. We have some awards that we'll be giving out this evening.
Yep, so at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Berendika down. He's our athletic director. And we will present our student recognitions and athlete recognitions, as well as we have some Monroe Ed Foundation grants to award as well. So if you'd like to join us to hand out the certificate.
Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to recognize several of our student athletes who have achieved conference and state honors, either individually or as part of a team. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to commend all of our fall student athletes. Being a student athlete is no small accomplishment, requiring them to balance practices, games, and team commitments alongside with other responsibilities. Our student athletes dedicate a tremendous amount of time and effort, consistently meeting the high expectations set by their coaches. We are incredibly proud of their achievements and the way they represent our community both on and off the field. When your name is called, please come up to be recognized. We will begin with Boys and Girls Cross Country. Boys are coached by Nicholas Puleo, and the girls are coached by Mary Howroyd. Steven Barbera, GMC All-Conference. James Giordano, GMC All-Conference. For the boys team, just a couple extra things in addition to the conference awards. The All-State and postseason honors were also sent out. Steven Barbera was named to the third team All-Group Four. He was also named the NJ.com GMC Player of the Year. And individually, he achieved the GMC Red Division title. The GMC title was number fourth in Central Group Four, 27th overall Group Four, and he was top 25 at the Metta Champions. Posted a 16-minute and 22.31 miles, which was the best time at a Metta Champions in school history. Next, for Girls Cross Country, we have Ananya Raja, GMC All-Conference. And we also have Maya Davis, GMC All-Division. Next slide. All right, next we have Boys Soccer, coached by head coach Steve McKenzie. Christian Tay, GMC All-Division. And Nate Offenberg, GMC All-Division. Aiden Iyer, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. And Christopher Duran, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. For the Boys Soccer, Aiden Iyer was also named to the second team All-Group Four and NJ.com GMC Player of the Year. Next team we have is Girls Soccer, coached by Christian Jessup. Meredith Arts, GMC All-Division. And Angelina Rocha, GMC All-Division. Next we have Jamie Beninda, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. Sophia Gartner, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. And Massan Uduwahan, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. Additionally, Jamie Beninda was named to the second team All-Group Four. Sophia Gartner was named to first team All-Group Four, second team All-State, NJ.com GMC Player of the Year. And Massan was named to the second team All-Group Four, and she will also represent Monroe at Rutgers University on January 12th for the 2025 National Girls and Women in Sports Event. As a team, our girls soccer program this year achieved the...were Red Division champs. They were back-to-back GMC Conference Champions. And this year, they were also the NJSIAA Central Group Four sectional champions. Next up, we have Girls Volleyball, coached by Coach Victoria Steck. Sarah Levy, GMC All-Division. And Natalie Grant, GMC All-Division and All-Conference. For gymnastics, even though we do not have a gymnastics team, we do have some gymnasts who compete as independents. This year, we had Melissa Calentino, who was our chaperone, and our athlete, Keisha Gandhi, was named to the GMC All-Conference at Large. Next up, we have Field Hockey, coached by Coach Melissa Ladd. Victoria D'Souza and Mello, GMC All-Conference. Daniela Rubino, GMC All-Conference and All-Division. And as a team, our team was named with the GMC Sportsmanship Award for the GMC. Next we have our football program, coached by head coach Nick Isola. Logan Fortiades, National Goal Team First Team. Brandon McAluso, National Goal Division First Team. And Logan Richter, National Goal Division First Team. Anthony Solisi, National Goal Division Second Team. And Kamani Yearwood, National Goal Division Second Team. All right, next we have our cheerleading program. Our Fall Styline Team competed in the GMC Performance Competition on December 8th for the first time in school history. We not only hosted the competition, but also won the Red Division, which is the highest division. Our team is coached by head coach Kim Lawson. And our athletes on the team, Meredith Armstrong, Carly Bachkowski, Mackenzie Casey, Ava Sitron, Juliana Dowd, Ava Fay, Colby Fernandez, Victoria Fierdeliso, Isabella Grippa, Brynlee Hoyt, Jia Jarca, Lila Kika, Jenna Lugo, Angelina Mayo, Daniella Mayo, Alyssa Puglia, Brianna Presbazuski, Summer Reneo, Juliana Scooty, Leah Scooty, Addison Shea, Krista Tremontana, Delilah Updale, and Ariana Walters. Lastly, we also had our National Signing Day event on November 13th, 2024, and we did have five student athletes who were recognized for playing after high school. We have Summer Reneo, who will be attending Quinnipiac University for Acrobatics and Tumbling. We have Sophia Gardner, who will be attending Coastal Carolina University. Meredith Arts will be attending St. Francis University for Soccer. Angelina Rocha will be attending McDaniel College. And Jamie Beninda will be attending Lebanon Valley College. That concludes this. Thank you so much, and congratulations to all the student athletes and your families. Next, we would like to recognize our staff and schools in the awarding of the 2024-2025 Monroe Education Foundation Mini Grants. At this time, if the foundation president, Mr. Ryback, would please come up to assist in presenting the grant. The Monroe Education Foundation has been funding district-wide grants for over 25 years through the foundation's Grant Awards Program. This year, the foundation is excited to present eight mini-grants throughout the district. First, we have from Monroe Township High School, Beneatha Gaushanker, for a grant titled Engineering Design and Development/PTLW. From Apple Garth School, Radhika Patel, for a grant titled Colonial Era Mammoth Historical Society. From Monroe Township High School, Linda Chu, for a grant titled Immersive Travel Virtual Reality Experience. From Monroe Township High School and Middle School, David Ratner, for a grant titled Master Class Featuring Jerry Weldon. From Barclaybrook, Diane Arendz and Sarah Crane, for a grant titled Barclaybrook Land Sensory Path. From Brookside School, Nancy Dempsey, Kimberly Bertini, and Lisa Zimmer, for a grant titled SCL Character Education Books. From Mill Lake School, Nicole Mascola, Christine Casella, and Jennifer Toth, for a grant titled Sensory Pathway. And last but not least, from Barclaybrook, Christine Doucette, for a grant titled The Pencil, The Paper, and The First Grader.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our award recipients this evening. The next item on our agenda is discussion of board goals. So last month, we had the presentation. They were up on the screen. We talked about some edits and revisions. Those edits and revisions have been shared with the board, and so now we're just looking to discuss and approve the goals so that we can put them up on the website. So I'd like to open it up to discussion for the board. If anybody has any questions or comments. Ms. Ratner?
Just one quick thing, and I apologize for not realizing this earlier. Just the goal, it's goal number four. Just the subtext. I know someone had come up last month to discuss this. Would it be possible to, I guess...I don't think we should have to describe each type, each part of our population, but I don't want to exclude any part of our community either, so...
So just say, communities? Create a network with our communities?
Like, right, or create a network throughout our... Like, right, or create a network throughout our township. I understand what we were trying to do. I also just think that we also want to also network with parents and also people, like adults who necessarily don't have children, in the district. So Dr. Lehman, I know you're looking...
Here's a suggestion for wording. Create a network with, throughout our community, inclusive of students. If you wanted to highlight students as a demographic that often may be overlooked in terms of our communication efforts, that would highlight that, but it would be inclusive of the entire community at large, whether that's our school community, or our community members in small businesses, local businesses, et cetera.
Okay. So create a network with, create a network throughout our community, including students, and hold events together. But I'll read these all out in entirety once we finish the discussion, just to make sure that we're clear.
So we are agreeing to take out the word "active adult"?
Yes.
And make it more generic?
Yep. Any other comments? Okay, so I'll just go through and read each goal, just so it's, the public can hear them, and then we'll, we can vote to approve, to have these posted to our website. So, goal number one, to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers while maintaining an excellent quality of education. To accomplish this goal, we will continue our focus on alternate revenue-driving initiatives, i.e. the ESIP program. Goal number two, to support district-wide use of artificial intelligence, AI, to enhance personalized learning with educational experiences tailored to individual students' needs. To accomplish this goal, we will create and review the district's AI policy and support professional development opportunities for staff. Goal three, to continue to expand our advocacy at the state and community level for additional funding and legislative changes that benefit our school district. To accomplish this goal, the board will work with the community, will work with community members through the Citizens Advisory Committee to increase awareness of the current financial status and needs of the district. And then lastly, goal number four, to enhance communication throughout our community by identifying areas where we can improve communication. To accomplish this goal, we will identify areas where we can improve communication, create a network throughout our community, including students, and hold events to gather input from community members. So can I have, if there's no questions or comments, then can we have a motion to approve? Second, motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Chifano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so these will be, I will send the edits to Mr. Merlada, and then we'll have these uploaded to our district website. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Are there any committees that would like to give a report? Ms. Bora?
I'll start with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met on December 10th. The board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Piero, Ms. Ratner, who was sitting in for Ms. Sharma, Dr. Peck, Mrs. Fabiano, and the administrators in attendance were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and Ms. Allen. The attorney office, the attorney invoice for the month of September and October for both Bush and Porzio were reviewed. Next, the bill list totaling $5,317,000 was reviewed at the time of the Finance Committee. That was all the bill lists we had. We do have a couple addendums for tonight. Next, the committee discussed the township police service costs. The committee had asked Dr. Chanley and Ms. Allen to present a report that detailed the money that MTBOE had paid to the township for the police services they had provided for district events like games, BOE meetings, school graduation ceremonies, et cetera. The report showed that we paid $26,288 in the school year 2223 to the township for police services. Then in the last school year 2324, we paid $36,258 for the police services. In the last three months, we have paid $8,118 for police services for the current school year. The report did a comparison with other school districts in our vicinity for the hourly rates being charged. The committee learned that the hourly rates have consistently gone up every year for Monroe Police, starting with $116 an hour in 2022, $128 an hour in 2023, and currently in 2024, we have been paying $132 per hour. In comparison, North Brunswick pays $55 an hour, it's $62 per hour with a car. Edison pays $58.99 per hour. And East Brunswick, which is closest to us right now, pays $110 per hour. The difference between these hourly rates was a cause of concern, but the administration stated that this was a conversation to have with the town, as the administration had no control over it. Dr. Chanley and the Board President, Mrs. Fabiano, have been trying to set up a meeting with the mayor and would include this in their conversation when that happens. The other thing that can be controlled by the administration is to refine the process and guidelines to determine the need for police presence. Dr. Chanley assured the committee that she has been in conversation with the Director of Security, Mr. Salbi, and the Athletics Director, Mr. Brandica, to ensure we ask for police presence when appropriate, and ensure that we only ask for as many officers as absolutely needed. It is imperative that the public understand that the goal of this board is to optimize our spend on this line item, but never at the cost of compromising the safety of our students and staff. This, that is, and will always be paramount. It is also important to mention that this police presence is always, in addition to our armed security staff, that is always present for all district events. Dr. Chanley concluded the Finance Committee meeting by sharing that the budget defense rounds with all building heads and department heads had been concluded, and that the administration is not just looking at dollars, but also at pennies as they work through the school budget for the year 2025-26. Dr. Chanley specifically shared that she was working closely with the new head of transportation, Ms. Marder, to review the current budget, the schedule, and route maps to find opportunities for optimization. She assured that through all of the defense and optimization rounds, they ensured that our students are never at a loss and our programs continued to be over adequate. And that concludes the Finance Committee's report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Bora? Okay, do you want to do curriculum?
Sure. The Co-Curricular Athletics and Pupil Personnel Committee met on December 10th. The committee met only for an hour this month, but that had a very exciting agenda. The first item on the agenda was a curriculum update presented by the Science and Social Studies Supervisor, Ms. Strass. She shared the details of the Forensics Course, which is an elective available to students in grades nine through 12. This course used to be offered as a half-yearly course till last year and was transitioned to a full-year elective for the school year, which prompted the course update. Mr. Merlada and Mr. Schneider then presented six proposed course additions to our Program of Studies, five of which will be available in upcoming school year 2526, and one will be available in 2627 school year. The first two courses fell under the Computer Science Career Readiness, Life Literacies, and Key Skills. The first one was Computer Science Essentials. It would be offered from grade nine through 12, and is an excellent entry point into computer science curriculum in the high school. The students would learn visual block-based programming and then transition on to text-based programming like Python. And if they desire to take their computer education further, this class would provide the perfect foundation for Computer Science Principles and Computer Science A, which are higher rigor programming classes. The second course was Cybersecurity, which would be offered from grades 10 through 12. A prerequisite for this would be Computer Science Essentials, Regular or AP, and AP ComSciA. This course would introduce tools and concepts of cybersecurity and help create solutions that allow people to share computing resources while protecting privacy. Students will use virtual labs to discover key concepts and raise their knowledge and commitment to ethical computing behavior. This course would be a great way for our students to get a feel of a very popular undergrad major in computer science before they head out to college to actually take it. The next course was in Video and Media Production, Broadcasting, and Career Readiness, Life Literacies and Key Skills. Mr. Merlada shared that the idea for a course called MTHS Morning Show, which would be offered from grades nine through 12, this is in addition to Video Media Production 1, 2, and 3, that are currently being offered in MTHS. Some of these students help us during the board meetings every time. These courses will go through rewrites or updated, or will be updated in summer of 2025 with the introduction of this new course. This new course will help students immerse themselves in the dynamic world of broadcast, multimedia production by contributing to a periodic morning announcement show intended for the school community. This course is designed for all levels of content creators and will provide an opportunity for students to express themselves and inform, entertain the community, and gain real-world experiences in media production. Then Mr. Schneider presented two courses in Fine and Performing Arts that will be part of Program of Studies in 2025. It was, the first one was Digital Photography III, which allows for a progression in this discipline for students in grade 11 and 12 that have taken Digital Photography II and are looking to learn more and have teacher recommend, and would need teacher recommendation to take this course. This level of digital photography will allow students an advanced professional-level exploration of digital photography and editing, and it'll give them the opportunity to do college-level projects and professional-quality work. Next course was Honors Piano III, which through committed deliberation and Dr. Higgins' suggestion would be called Honors Piano. The prerequisite for this course would be piano II or an audition or teacher recommendation. This course will focus on more advanced concepts of music theory and how they apply that to keyboarding. Students will perform a variety of repertoire from classical to jazz, and will have two solo piano recitals. The last addition to the Program of Studies for the school year 2627 is in FIDE, Physical Education. This is a progression course called Strength and Conditioning III. Given that sophomores have been allowed to take this course starting this year, they will need a third year of this if they continue to do this through senior year, and so the genesis of this course. The prerequisite would be Strength and Conditioning II with a grade of 85 or higher. Next on the agenda that night was a very detailed presentation on the District Abbott Program that was given by Dr. Cretelli and Dr. Sanaski. Monroe adopted Abbott in 2009, and the committee learned all about the 15-year history, progression, and accomplishment of this program, and the impact on the lives of students and teachers from this program. I would encourage community members to watch the video recording for this to learn more. Today, Abbott is a district-wide effort with MTHS, NTMS, and one of the three upper elementary schools, Woodling, having adopted the program. The administration shared their goal of including the other two elementary schools soon, and also putting processes in place that would allow every district student, and not just the selected cohorts, to benefit from the Abbott methodologies. And that concludes the very lengthy curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Bora? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to go to our next committee report. Mr. DePain?
Hey, thank you very much. The Citizens Advisory Committee meeting was on Tuesday, December 10th. Present were myself, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Merlada, Ms. Fabiano, Mrs. Alvarez, and Ms. Ratner. Mr. Merlada spoke about the communications flow in the district and the district overview to all that were present. He spoke about the pitfalls, i.e. gaps in messaging, in the district. And I don't think the gaps are with the parents, but maybe with outside community, and maybe adult active communities, where sometimes some of the information doesn't get to the seniors. The Jamesburg representative, we have one person from Jamesburg who is on our committee, had some comments and spoke about her concerns with the Jamesburg students coming to Monroe from eighth to ninth. Dr. Chanley spoke about the good transition program we have with the students from eighth to ninth. We bring them up here, we show them around to the school, Dr. Lehman, and it's pretty decent. She had some other concerns, and Dr. Chanley said that she would handle the issues for the sake of an easier transition from the Jamesburg students to our high school. The meeting was ended at 7:30. The committee broke off into small groups, and we presented the letter from the Legislative Action Community Engagement Committee that we want to send to our legislators, and we actually, Mr. Merlada sent it to all the community members where they can report back any comments or the concerns that they had, and maybe any kind of ideas that they had to bring this letter to fruition for all of us, from all different genres in the town, to send one to our, to the...
Legislators?
Legislators. Oh my God, right out of my head. Thank you. And it's right here. We gave them an assignment to look over the letter, and I know from looking at the emails that some of them have reported back to Mr. Merlada already. The meeting was ended at 8:00 p.m. The next meeting is January 7, 2025, 7 to 8 in the high school media center. And thank you, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. DePain. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. DePain? Yep?
Real quick, the, one of the agenda items for next month's meeting will be to take all the feedback that we're receiving and then work through it as a committee to edit and tweak the letter. Were you going to say the same thing?
Yes. With, I also just wanted to comment and, I don't know, ask the opinion of other board members. One thing that we've discussed is having one form letter versus having a template, like multiple templates based on the person who is submitting the letter. So there, you know, there's obviously pros and cons, because obviously if you're, you know, a parent of a student in the district, you may have different reasons for wanting things if you are, you're not a parent, or if you are a student, or things like that. So I was just curious, I guess, if any, we don't have to discuss it here and now, but if you have input as to whether it should be this one form letter, which, you know, we've sort of heard isn't necessarily the most productive way of getting things done because they see the same thing over again, or having more personalized templates, which could then possibly become confusing. I just wanted to bring that up.
So that was, and that's one of the things that this committee was asked to, and when they're reading the letter, is from their lens, what does it look like, and does it make sense to them from their perspective in the community? When we bring them back next month, one of the outcomes potentially could be a letter addressing these issues is more appropriate to come from these people, and a letter addressing those issues is more appropriate to come from, you know, this other group. So I think it's still up in the air. The form letter is, I think, a simple, quick, you know, plop your name in, get it out quickly, but now, you know, maybe the feedback will be, let's make it more personalized, and, you know, something coming with specific numbers for construction and things, that might be an appropriate letter for some people, whereas someone else might say, we just need a quick, you know, this is our position, this is what we're looking for, you know, representing our demographic, sub-group.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
Just, my opinion is that that's a good suggestion, given the unique demographic of our town, where we do know that 50% of our town is not parents of children. They may be grandparents, but they're not parents of children in the school district. So at the very least, I think we could come up with two versions, which is, and call it parent and not-parent version. Programmatically, it would still be plug-and-play, it would still be clicking on that one link, but they would probably relate more to that content. And we have a team of people that could contribute to that content. So I think it's a great idea to have two versions, given how our town is right now. It just, it just makes all the sense in my head right now.
Yeah. Truthfully, we don't know how many versions we might have. I agree with your two versions, but we have such a variety of people on this committee. We don't know where they're going to come from. So I think when we have our next meeting, we could narrow it down to two, we could mention it to them. From the feedback, we might have to. So I think we have to wait until they all come back and have had a chance to look at the letter and give their feedback already. So, I mean, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Alvarez, you want to do your committee?
Yes. Okay. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, October 10th. Present at the meeting were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Dr. Higgins from the high school, Dr. Cretelli, Mrs. Fabiano, Dr. Peck, Mr. Zeichner, and Mrs. Ratner. There were two items on the agenda for discussion. Regulation 5440 honoring pupil achievement was brought forth to the committee. Current practice at the high school, which has been in place for at least 10 years, I don't remember the exact date, couldn't recall it when I was writing this, is that a grade of 90 or above is needed for a student to be eligible for principal's list. However, it is written in the regulation that a grade of 85 or better in honors courses will also qualify for principal's list. The administration is recommending that the board align this regulation with current practices. While reviewing this regulation, the committee found additional inconsistencies with the language, and the regulation will be revisited again at the January meeting. And the second item on the agenda was a discussion on Policy 2365 on the Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. The administration wanted to begin the process of creating a policy which will be used as a framework to address AI and its appropriate use in the classroom. This is a working collaborative document, and it will be revisited again by the committee in January. As a result, there are no policies on today's agenda for first read. Any questions?
Ms. Bora?
I actually would like to discuss this a little, so, but I want to start by commending Dr. Lehman on the work on the AI policy, because I think we made great progress really quickly from the template that you guys had. It looks like a great start, and... It, it looks like a great start and, and we can continue working on it. The thing that I would like to discuss is Policy Five, uh, the Regulation 5440. Um, and, um, I, just to let all the board members know, I've been in discussion about this since June of this year. Uh, it was brought to my attention by a community member, a parent, whose child, according to the policy, should have made the principals list. But, you know, when they approached this high school administration, the administration said, our process is that we don't give principal unless it's 90. The parent cited the policy and then, you know, included me on that email showing, this is the policy, but this is not being done. So that's when I started conversation with the administration, and we found out that maybe at some point there was a policy that aligned with the school processes and at some point that policy changed. So our current policy on our website says that for honors and AP students, 85 and over should qualify them in the principals list, while if you have a regular rigor course, it, it would be 90 and over. Um, logically, that makes sense in my head. And to the parents, besides that one parent, I've had a conversation with plenty of parents in the last few months. I had asked the administration to bring this to curriculum for discussion because the current policy states that the process is wrong, and we cannot have that. The policies and processes have to be aligned. So for that parent, the parent was right. The parent is citing a policy that's active on our website, which is not aligned to the process in the high school. And I was hoping that we could have a discussion with the high school administration in curriculum as to why we think that's the right way to do it and then make the changes to the policy. I believe we've been straight to policy, and so I'm using this moment here to share it with the rest of the board that, in my opinion, um, when a child is taking a higher rigor course and our class ranks, and I know that the argument I've heard is that the class ranks only happen in senior year, but they use weighted averages for that. Um, the, the whole goal of principals list and class rank is pretty similar. I'm just trying to say that you are, you're achieving that level of excellence in what you're doing. And so there is a differentiation in honors and higher rigor courses and regular courses, and that differentiation seems reasonable. So I would, as a board member, agree with the current policy on our website, and I would like a discussion with the administration as to why, because I did watch the Policy Committee meeting, and I did not see a reasoning except that's how we've always done it and that's how I know other principals in the areas do it. I went on to a multiple schools' policies, and honestly, our policy document is very detailed, and I know it has a lot of things that need to be cleaned up. Other schools don't have it like that, so their policy doesn't state it. Our policy states it. So we are technically wrong right now. So other schools are doing it because they don't have regulations that say that it needs to be done otherwise. So at this point, I would argue for the community and say, if our policy says the principals list should be awarded to students who have 85 or higher in honors, we should honor that, and this should be a discussion for the curriculum committee, and then the policy should change based on the reasoning. We, you know, we do things because we've been doing it for so long a certain way, but that status quo is what we tend to question all the time. And I'm questioning that status quo, that this principals list should take into account honors and AP-level courses, and they should be able to make the principals list. The way we give them weighted averages for everything, they should get that, that, you know, benefit in the principals list as well. Uh, Ms. Ratner, she-
Okay, um, so, you know, I definitely think it warrants more discussion. I know Dr. Chanley has said she was going to reach out to the administrators at all the different levels because, you know, I also noticed, we had said, like, there were multiple inconsistencies. One thing it mentions is pupils in grades five to eight must achieve an overall average of 85% in all the courses taken, um, in order to get honorable and for principal, um, which to me, um, which says only one course may have a grade in 75, 79% range. I don't believe that's what I've seen. Um, so my thought is if this is going to become a discussion at curriculum, I would also include administrators from the lower levels as well who also have these recognitions, just to make sure that that discussion, whether we change it to reflect what we're doing or we change, you know, or we change our policy, um, I, you know what I'm saying? I think we have to make sure we have that discussion from, you know, fifth grade and up.
Yeah, I definitely, the conversation is definitely not over. Uh, I think what happened with the, the discussion of this policy is it kind of opened the book up a little bit, and we went through and we're like, okay, like, this definitely needs to be looked at in its entirety. Um, so definitely, it'll be discussed again, I'm sure, in January.
So would this be a policy discussion or would this be a curriculum discussion?
Um, Dr. Lehman, did you wanna chime in?
So we can certainly bring it to cur, to curriculum. I think it warrants a discussion there. Uh, just a few points of clarification and then kind of a, an update as to the reality of when the discussion will probably happen. Uh, it speaks to honors, not AP, and I think that's one of the issues we have, the current policy. What happened was the practice in 2008 was 85 and 90, which is what is the current policy. The policy was, there was a revision made to the policy in 2008. All of the Program of Studies prior, inclusive of 2008, included the 85, 90. Starting in 2009, the Program of Studies was updated. So what we've determined is the changes from the 2008 curriculum or policy meeting, wherever it was done, wasn't translated into the document that was adopted in 2008. So that's why there's, the high school is operating on what the changes were in the meeting. The document that was approved in 2008 wasn't updated. So that's where the discrepancy originated, and that's why it wasn't actually even noticed by anyone because it was a done deal and signed, delivered in 2008, 2009. So that's the origin of the discrepancy. Um, in terms of the reality of when we can all talk about this, our next committee meetings, we get back from break on Thursday. We have a committee agenda item, committee agendas are created that Friday. So we've already pushed out this to our administrative team to review, but in reality, I don't think we're gonna have that finalized document two days from now, essentially. Um, so I think a realistic discussion is-
What do you mean?
Yeah, I think a realistic discussion will be February. And, uh, you know, regarding AI, I know Mr. Weiss is reviewing the policy as well from his legal perspective. Um, we have subgroups that are continuously working on that. So I think both of these discussions, um, specifically that, uh, student recognition one, uh, is probably a topic for the February policy meeting, just in terms of the short time. And we pushed it out to the, to the administrative team to review, and I know they're doing that. The elementaries, they, we, they meet almost weekly as a, as a cohort, and they do it on Zoom. So they, this was one of their agenda topics. Um, but we'd like all that information to be pulled together. And realistically, having it done on Friday after we get back, a final draft is probably not realistic. So just for expectation purposes, I think this is a Fri, a February agenda item.
That's realistic. But I do have a, a comment, Dr. Lehman. Uh, one of my issues with this was the parent was not hearing back often. Knowing the parent is in the right and we are doing our investigation, I feel, I feel like it, it would be, uh, and given that we are probably not discussing this till February, maybe not even changing it till March. Uh, if there, there are a lot of parents that are concerned about this. I don't know if that can, if anybody has approached the administration about it, maybe a letter can go out to them that we are in pro, in discussion with the Board of Ed on these policies, and so this is on hold for now, because there are some parents who haven't heard back yet. And I did, you know-
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just really quick, dual enrollment courses, just because I know we've been adding these, um, are those considered as honors or AP courses and with-
The dual enrollment status doesn't define them as either AP or honors. We take our existing courses and we share them with the university. And based on their screening process, that includes the qualifications of the instructor, they determine the dual enrollment piece. So it doesn't, whether they're honors or AP is not related to. Most of them tend to be an AP course or an honors course more often than not. Um, but that's not the defining factor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Payne?
Yeah, um, the delegate assembly regarding resolutions was held on December 7th.
Wait, no, no, hold on, we're still, this was still the curriculum. This is the curriculum, no, sorry, policy discussion. Yep, we're not in other board business yet. So any other questions on policy? Okay, so then personnel.
The Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, December 10th. Present at the meeting were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Fabiano, Mr. Piero, and Mrs. DePayne. The administration continues to work diligently to fill vacancies, and there are seven new certified teachers for approval on tonight's agenda. Additionally, the superintendent is recommending two individuals for administrative positions. The first recommendation will fill a vice principal vacancy at the middle school due to retirement. And the second is a recommendation for the newly created position of Director of School Counseling and Student Support Services. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Okay, seeing none, then we were gonna move on to our public forum for agenda items only. Any members of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening, Doug Cory, Monroe Township. Uh, I have two comments, uh, and I think they relate to your agenda tonight because the session you've already had. Uh, at your last meeting, there was a gentleman that was concerned about how much attention.
Nope, I think it's, I think it's on.
It's on, I think, John. I think it's on.
Yes.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Uh, there was a gentleman that spoke about, uh, how much attention members of the board were giving to communicating with the, uh, senior citizens of the township. I am a senior citizen of the township. I've, I've been a citizen of Monroe Township since 1969. Uh, but, uh, I don't think this gentleman really understood the percentage of the population that are senior citizens. I don't think he took into account the fact that we contribute heavily financially to the support of the school systems. Uh, in my community, my adult community, Regency, we have 1,274 homes. The average amount of taxes on that, at those homes, uh, this is an average, is around $11,000 to $12,000 a year. Over 50% of that goes to support of the schools. So I did a little quick arithmetic and estimated that over seven, somewhere between $7 and $8 million comes from Regency to support the school system. That's one point. The other point is, just because we don't have anything to personally gain from the school system, as citizens of this country, we believe in how important education is. And therefore, we will support the schools if we feel those schools are doing a good job. It is vital that this board enhance their communications to the adult communities so that they have a better understanding of what you're attempting to do for the students who are the future citizens, the future doctors, the future attorneys, the future engineers, the future scientists, the future teachers. I, I just believe that that needs some, some comment on. Uh, the other point, uh, just came to mind as I was listening to your discussion about AI. And I don't know if any of you saw the 60 Minutes presentation this past Sunday, but they were talking about AI and how a high school student-
Oh, yes, we did. So coincidentally, I did just talk about this. We did just speak about this.
Oh, okay. All right, so, so then you're, you're aware of, of my concern there. My question is, do we have a policy that somehow deals with the student use of school-issued technology? Because all of our students have laptops. If a student is sitting at home or they're on the weekend and they harass another student using the school's laptop, do we have a policy that deals with that issue? If not, then I strongly encourage you to look into establishing such a policy. Because as you move toward AI, kids are very creative, they're, they're young. They do stupid things, but there are other kids that are affected by it that can affect them for the rest of their lives.
That could even possibly lead them to commit suicide. So it is vital that we have some kind of regulation, some kind of policy that will lessen the use of students using laptops.
Um, Dr. Did, Dr. Lehman, did you just wanna comment on the-
Sure. So we do, we have an acceptable use of technology policy, but, uh, situation, any situation involving student behavior then would clearly go under the code of conduct. Um, and there's multiple, I would say there's an overlapping availability for us to address situations like that, that are both policy-related as well as code of conduct-related.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter if it's a school laptop or their own laptop, but there would be consequences in place. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
George Gonkelman, 5 Kelly Court, Monroe. Um, I received some information, um, online about grants that were given out in Middlesex County totaling 12, over $12 million. Um, Carteret received 5.8-
Mr. Gonkelman, is this an agenda item?
Uh, if you look at the administrator's report, there's several grant, uh, items in there, and this is what I'm talking about. If you want, I can wait till the end.
No, it's fine.
I'll do it now. Anyway, basically, there are four different communities in Middlesex County that received grant money, uh, apparently from the county or the state. And I don't know whose job it is to track these or how we missed it. These grants were for preschool, um, education. And it's one of our deficiencies in Monroe that's often talked about here. And I don't, when I received that, I thought, okay, we, obviously, we missed it. We didn't get anything. I don't know if we applied or were even informed that there was an opportunity to apply or if we had something prepared for such an application. I don't know what the requirements were. Uh, the, the information I got was just that it was awarded. Uh, how, the, what the process was to, to getting that award, I don't know. But it was, it would be significant help. I mean, um, Carteret got 5.8 million, Dunellon got 3.3 and 1/2 million, Bisgratway 2, 2 and 1/4, you know, um, pretty soon you're talking about real money. And it's, real money is always an issue here. So, um, I asked the same question at the council meeting that I just bailed out of. Uh, and no one addressed it, but they will, uh, when I see them next. But, um, somewhere in there, we missed an opportunity and, and let's not miss any-
I wish that this was an opportunity that we could have taken advantage of. Mr. Gonkelman, believe, believe you me, everybody here who is sitting at this table would have loved to have received some of this money. Um, unfortunately, we don't qualify. Um, we can't, we can't apply for these because we don't have kindergarten. Um, and we, full-day kindergarten, excuse me, full-day kindergarten. And so we, when our legislators were here in July, we had asked if we could apply for these grants to use them to apply towards full-day kindergarten, if they could change, somehow change some verbiage or something so that we could at least apply for these. Um, and we can't.
So it's exclusively preschool?
It's exclusively preschool.
Because we don't have full-time, full-day-
Kindergarten.
We need full-day kindergarten first.
Yep, yep.
I don't quite understand the logic of that, but I'm not as new as you.
Yeah, we, we definitely wish that we could, but we can't, we can't apply for these. We're trying, we're, we- Yeah, it has been a discussion. Um, it's part of our five-year strategic plan in bringing in full-day kindergarten. Um, but unfortunately, we can't apply for these grants.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. I just, I wanted to comment on the Policy Committee. I watched it for the evening that it was broadcast, and the thing that caught my attention was the high school is not following the policy. The number-one thing that the Board of Education does is set policy. It doesn't matter if a school or administration or parents don't like that policy. You can't just change procedure. And the information that was given by Dr. Higgins that perhaps the board made a mistake back in 2006 really sat with me because in 10, 15, 20 years, I don't want some other administrator to say that policies we set when I was on the board was just a mistake. I have not been able to find, the minutes from that meeting, I didn't find a recording of any such meeting where that policy was changed. I don't know, Dr. Lehman, maybe if you have that information, but the- I don't know, Dr. Lehman, maybe if you have that information, but the policy is the policy. And the policy is the policy because probably back in 2006, when they looked at how they weight a honors course, you get eight additional points. And it's not during graduation year that you receive those eight points. That course is weighted when you take it. So if you take it in freshman year, that grade is weighted eight points. It doesn't become important until you're applying for college when your class rank is being calculated. But those grades are earned when they're taken. And that eight points, you add 85 plus eight, you're over 90. Many times, parents have come to me and voiced their displeasure that at the high school, when kids are taking honors, NAP courses, the teachers start off the year by telling the students, "I don't give 90s." There is a culture at our high school that is not pro-student. I've said it when I was running for the board, I said it the three years I sat on the board, and I continue to say it. The culture has to change. We need to be a district that is for the children. This is an accolade. This is not something that is earth-shattering, it's not something that's going to change the course of their life. It is an accolade showing their achievement in that type of a course. It's an honors course, it's weighted by eight points. Eight points, if you have an 85, is over the 90. I don't know why you would continue to not honor our students for their achievement in these courses. And honestly, it really stunned me, sitting there hearing that the procedure, that's not their procedure, so you should change the policy. I'm sorry, if you break the law, do you go and say, "Well, I don't believe in that law, so change the law because it shouldn't be the law?" No, this is your policy. The policy drives everything in this district. And they're not following the policy. And shame on the high school. How many students should have received the principal's list over the course of all of those years that didn't? Those students deserve that accolade. The Board of Education at that time, the superintendent at that time, the principal at that time, all made that policy. If it was wrong, and you feel it was wrong, then you need to change it. But until that time, that is your policy, and you have to follow that until you change it. And if you're not changing it until February, March, April, those students that met the requirements of that policy should get that accolade on their report card. Not doing so is doing injustice to the student, honestly. And you're supposed to be here to support the students and honor their success, and that's what you should be doing.
Just for the members of the board, to the extent that the board wishes to suspend any one or part of its policies, the board can do so by way of a vote.
So we could, we would have, there would have to be a motion to suspend the portion of the policy to, until further review?
If that's what the board wanted to do.
Ms. Fabiano, for clarification, then, would we not be recognizing students because we wouldn't have a policy to do so, or would it just, I just, I feel like I want to do this on a whim.
Right, yeah, and I don't want to penalize the students for not, for getting their achievement.
And my interpretation of doing something like that would be that, we're siding with the administration and not with the students. If you want to change, suspend a part of the policy because the process being followed is wrong, I, I would, that was, might be my interpretation.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily suggesting it, I'm just saying to the board that, to the extent that the board feels that action should be taken now as opposed to waiting, the board has the ability to do it. I'm not saying it's a recommendation because it's not really a legal issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Tufano?
Well, the only action that should be taken is that the administration should be following our policy. That's the only action that should be taken, and that should be enforced by us somehow.
I do want to add that during the policy meeting, I did ask about what happens to those students that, you know, want to challenge this, and Dr. Higgins did say that there is an appeal process to contact the administration.
And I'm personally, you know, I witnessed an appeal process that was just stucked, there was no response, and so I do not support that a process is being followed right now. And I, I think we can fix that. It's been brought up now, that we've had a discussion, and I know we can, you know, these things take meetings and processes to be followed, but till then, we follow the policy, is the thing that should be done. Till then, the policy needs to be followed. When the policy changes through board action, then the new process or new policy can be followed, if that's the way it's-
Shouldn't the superintendent ensure that the administrators are following the policy?
Yeah, I think, and, yes, and I think what came out of that policy discussion is, it's actually, it's not just the high school, it's the middle school, it's the elementary school, that it is across the district. So it's, we have discovered in discussing this policy that it is not just a high school thing, that there is language across the policy that affects the entire district.
Right. One of the things that we realized was that this was last modified before the sixth grade moved to the middle school. So there's, you know, I'm glad that, you know, as much as you never want problems to occur, we have an eye on it now, we can fix what needs to be fixed. But the reality is, there's a lot of stuff in here that has to get changed because, you know, there's no sixth grade at the elementary school anymore, so they're going to be reviewed differently.
It definitely was, it was definitely a policy that needed to be brought up and discussed.
And I would, I would like to, you know, share that this is only being discussed because a parent complained. So somebody did complain, and that's why this came up.
But it shouldn't even be a complaint. If that's the policy, then the administration should follow the policy.
Until the policy is changed.
But I think that comes from the superintendent or assistant superintendent to the administration to ensure that the policy is being followed. We set the policy, but I believe it's, they're the ones who make sure that it's followed.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum and move on to our Assistant Superintendent's report.
So I'm going to combine both Assistant Soup and Superintendent Report. Dr. Chanley was unavailable tonight, she is ill. We wish her well. So with that said, I will run through a brief Assistant Superintendent's Report and then go right into the Superintendent's Report. A few highlights from tonight. I'd like to congratulate those student athletes who participated in the fall season and who were recognized tonight. Also, congratulations to our coaches. All of our sports had a really strong fall season, and we look forward to our winter season. Additionally, I want to thank the Monroe Ed Foundation for the grants awarded tonight. I look forward to seeing the implementation of those grants this school year. On the agenda for approval is the acceptance of the money that would fund those grants. This year, the total is just over $14,000. So thank you very much, Monroe Ed Foundation. We're in the middle of our winter concert series throughout the district. School performances have been taking place the past couple of weeks. We also have performances that have been taking place out in the community. The concert series continues after winter break, and this was highlighted by our student, one of our student board reports. But a big congratulations to Ms. Nina Schmetterer, the middle school chorus director, who's been named the 2425 NJMEA Master of Music Teacher for New Jersey. She will be, she was nominated for this prestigious award in what was observed by a committee of retired educators from around the state. She'll be honored and receive her plaque at the 2025 NJMEA State Conference this coming February in Atlantic City with hundreds of New Jersey music educators in attendance. So congratulations to Nina. And then finally, I just want to wish everyone a very safe winter break, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a healthy New Year. And with that said, I'll move through the Superintendent's Report. So it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items, A through W. This is the 10-member vote.
Second.
Oh, is there, are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment, please.
Ms. Bora?
I would like to just mention that it's a deep sadness that I see the resignation of Dr. Merson, the teacher of Latin in the high school. He did wonders with our Latin program, and he will be missed. And I would like to commend the administration for not skipping a beat with this. We are bringing back Ms. Hoffman, who used to be our Latin teacher. She's really loved in the high school, so, you know, Mr. Merson will be here till the holidays, and Ms. Hoffman starts, that's just, especially when it comes to world language teachers, this is a feat in itself. So I want to commend the administration for doing them both in the same agenda. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There was a motion by Mr. Tufano and second by Ms. DePain, so can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Personal items X through AU. It's a recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve those items. This is under the nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. Ratner. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter AU for Ms. Lufkow.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So this is also nine-member personnel, so this is the one you abstained on. So the Assistant Superintendent recommends that the board approve letter AU under the nine-member vote.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second by, motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora. So can we have a roll call for just item AU?
Questions, discussion.
Questions, discussion, sorry. No, okay. Now can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'll abstain again.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board action, 10-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve attached board action items A through K.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. DePain. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on the professional development for Dr. Chanley. I think the same thing is listed there twice, but for anything pertaining to her.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Did we do L through Q? The nine-member?
Nine-member.
Board action, board action, nine-member.
Okay, there we go. So the Superintendent recommends the board approve attached items L through Q.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. DePain. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter Q.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Business Administrators' Report.
It is recommended that board action items A through E be approved by consent roll call under 10-member. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. Bora. Any questions or comments? Ms. Bora?
Ms. Allen, I did have on the addendums, check 4020 for auto body and trucks. Can you give us some background on this? There was $34,000.
Yes, that was, there was a bus accident, and that was covered by insurance. So that was the pairs of government insurance to cover.
And I had one more question. So we, the Education Service Commission, there are, you know, there are tuition invoices, but then there is an invoice for September and an invoice for October. I wanted to confirm those two. So this is check 4028 and check 4029. Is that transportation-related for our subcontracting? 4028 and 4029?
It says September and October invoice, and they're high-dollar amounts. I'm going to say, I'm trying to find it. It's likely the-
Typically, it says tuition under them, and this one just says September invoice or October. It doesn't say tuition, but there are multiple line items, but it totals to a big amount for both of these checks.
I think I have too many things up in here. 4028?
4028, Ms. Bora?
The check number?
4028.
4028 and 4029.
I didn't find it. Let me find it. All right. How, how much was it?
So one was, they're both over $400,000.
Okay.
Both the checks are over $400,000. It's 400 and, sorry, I don't have the bill list open, I just have the number written here, but it was, one was, I think, $499, and the other was 428.
That sounds like transportation.
It sounds like transportation. Okay, all right. That was my question on the bill list, and I wanted to comment on the Monroe Education Foundation grants. I'm so happy to see them come back. I know it's been a few years, and the excitement in the district amongst teachers is palpable. So thank you to the Monroe Education Foundation for starting that grant process for the teachers again. Much appreciated.
Ms. Ratner?
Yeah, I did actually just have a quick question about the bill list. I saw that there were two checks. It's 04112 for $17,000, and then 0415, wait, no, 04157 for $13,000 that were for tuition under charges from 2022, 2023?
Yes.
I just, you could elaborate on that because-
Yeah, and we, every year, we have to, the private schools, they get audited, so their costs get audited, so what they charge for tuition gets adjusted according to what the actual cost ends up being. So, so actually, two years after that year, there'll be an adjustment. That's why it's always two years back. That's fine. Yeah, so we have, every year, we have some type of adjustment. That was definitely transportation. I did find it, thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
I want to recuse on check 3778 on the bill list for myself, and yes for everything else.
Okay. Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter E, and then on the bill list, I need to recuse on 03616 for Mr. Lurie, 03799 for Dr. Chanley, 03609 for Ms. Francis, and then on the addendum, I need to recuse on 04326 and 04327 for Mr. Ratner, 04313 for Mr. Snyder, 04307 for Mr. Lurie, and 04042 for Methesal Merbal.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, I recuse on bill list items for Methesal Merbal.
Okay. Motion passes. It is recommended that board action items F through H be approved by consent roll call. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tufano, second by Ms. Bora. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter H.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is the board president's report, and I'll keep this brief, but just a few things to update the board on. So, last Thursday, Ms. Alvarez and I had the pleasure of attending an event with the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Kevin Damer, and First Lady Tammy Murphy for the History Happened Here program. I want to commend Ms. Visaki and our students on, it was just an amazing event. I learned a lot about the history of Monroe, even though I went to school here. I didn't realize the role that Monroe played in the Declaration of Independence. It was very fascinating listening to them telling their stories, and it was just incredible to hear the First Lady and the Commissioner to commend our students and our program. They were thoroughly impressed. So, it was just, it was an ama, it was just, it was an amazing morning, and I was very thankful that we could be a part of it and to witness it. It was just, it was great. I also want to thank the Education Foundation for their grants this evening. It is very exciting that this program has been revitalized, and I'm excited to see that our teachers are excited about it and that ultimately benefits our students. So, thank you to the MEF. Also, congratulations to all of our student award recipients this evening. And lastly, we are heading into the holidays. As Dr. Lehman said, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season and ready to start up again in 2025 with new year and new beginnings. So, I wish everybody well, and thank you for all that you do for our students and our community, and I hope you all get to relax and enjoy the holidays. So, with that, we will go on to other board business. Mr. Tufano?
I'd like to thank the Resnick family for their generous donation of $2,000, a piano award, $2,000. That was nice of them. And I just had a question. When you guys met with the First Lady last week, was anything brought up about funding with her?
So, I will say, Ms. Alvarez and I did not get, spend much time with the First Lady. She, she was very much involved with the students. Her, her focus was not about any of the adults in the room. She was fully vested in our children and what they were doing, so it really wasn't the time for us to do that. But I do know that Mr. Maralta did speak with her a little bit.
How far in advance did we know that she was coming for that?
I only knew Thurs, the week before.
It was like the week, Thursday, the week before.
I'm just asking, because one of our board goals is to do all we can to advocate for funding, and I think we should have had, you know, maybe a few residents meet her there and ask her why we're being ignored.
Yeah, that wasn't the purpose of the event. We had specific, we had specific instructions on what the event was supposed to look like.
No, I, I get it. We have instructions, we're minions, we're supposed to be doing what we're supposed to be doing to keep peace with the legislators, but Linda Greenstein comes here and we baby her, and we have the First Lady here, the honor of the First Lady here, and we cater to her, and we're keeping everything peaceful and everything quiet, but we're not getting any results for years. I've been on this board for years, and every year, we say, we're gonna fight, 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 and when they come here, we give them bagels and candy and make them home.
Ms. Fabiano?
And we're not getting anything done.
Mr. Maralta did have an opportunity to speak with, yeah, her chief of staff.
I'm not blaming anybody.
No, 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 he, he, I will say, it wasn't a lost opportunity. I will say, I know that Mr. Maralta did have an opportunity to speak with her chief of staff and did try to work it in there.
I mean, I don't know about everybody else on this board, but I'm, I'm personally pretty tired of not getting anything accomplished with the funding.
It's very, it is very frustrating, too. We, and we have reached out several times, especially after following up from our meeting, and we have gotten no response. And then I will send a follow-up email to hopefully get a response, and I did get one.
That just said, we'll look into it, get back to you.
But that's about it, so.
One other thing I'd like to say is, the seniors in this community, as Mr. Poy pointed out, do contribute a huge amount of money to our schools, and I appreciate that myself. In my opinion, they, they shouldn't have to. In their days of retirement, they shouldn't have to foot this huge bill. The state should help us foot this huge bill and give the seniors in their days of retirement a little bit of a tax break, bigger tax break than what they get. Unfortunately, in our township, they are footing a huge part of the bill, and they shouldn't have to. So, I would hope that the seniors of this community would, would write to their legislators and, and fight with us, you know, alongside us, to get more funding for our students so that you wouldn't have to foot such a huge part of the bill.
Ms. Fabiano?
I don't think it's fair.
I agree.
I don't want it.
Ms. Ratner?
So, I was actually gonna put this as part of my other board business, but it really ties into what you had just said, because there was a legislative committee meeting this past Saturday, and one thing that we've learned is that, you know, another bill has been introduced. It's called S3917. It was introduced literally just last week, I guess maybe two weeks ago now, December 5th, which is the School Funding Reform Act, because as we know, the time is up on what was there. But the difference being now, because they need to put something else in place because that's ended, they are accepting hearings specifically only for the, the school funding formula. You know, and there's also some changes that they have presented, which is different than their normal, we'll create a task force and talk about it. I don't even know if I agree with all of these changes. I'll just highlight a couple really quick. But one is that instead of a 2% increase, the bill would amend it, allow a district to increase its tax levy up to the lesser of the district's local share, which is the amount that the current school funding formula determines a district can afford to raise locally, or a 7% increase. So, instead of 2%, it'd be 7%. I'm just sharing you what's there. It's also a gradual phasing of full funding of extraordinary special education aid over five years, which I know is something that we've discussed as being, you know, in concern here. It also will reduce the reimbursement for students that are educated in district that are integrated from 40,000 to 35,000. It establishes a reduction adjustment aid to ensure that no district loses more than 2% from year to year, and then it finally would address the transparency surrounding school funding, because a lot of districts, as you know, we have seen ourselves, will say, we have no clue what to expect. We get our numbers a week before we have to submit our budget. So, this would require at least 30 days' notice for those things to happen. However, they are having four hearings before they're, you know, they're moving forward on this. One was actually yesterday, and I actually spoke to someone who went, who said that there were only five people who had gone to speak at this one. Now, they only put this out the week before. But then the other three are in January, and I can send this out to everyone, but it's January 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Somerville, January 14th, 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Department of Ed in Trenton, and January 16th down in Camden from 6:00 to 8:00. Our legislative action meeting is on that day, and I think transportation was moved to the day before, so I think there's still curriculum, but I think we need to, you know, go to the committee that's presenting this bill, share with them the things that we've discussed. This won't be the same people we've talked to, because maybe one of our legislators are on there, but it's not, you know, it's other legislators as well, and we need to share with them the specific problems that we're having in Monroe, you know, because of how the formula has been, you know, very detrimental to Monroe because of our, you know, higher population of seniors, which has, you know, reduced the amount of equalization aid we get, all the things that someone who's better with numbers can probably explain better than I. But, you know, I think this will be the perfect chance, because it's specifically related to school funding, to really get people out there to speak about what needs to be changed and, and why.
Yeah, if you, I'll put the link in my confidential, and so if anybody wants to sign up to testify, I think the more people we can get there, the better.
Are you suggesting that instead of doing the Legislative Action Committee in, in district, the committee should go?
I was, I was...
I think that's a brilliant idea.
The only problem is then curriculum, it's, that's the only other meeting.
Maybe we talk about moving curriculum to another day?
Didn't we already move, I think we already moved it.
We did.
We did already move it for January.
I don't know. Would Friday work for curriculum?
It's on, sorry, last I saw was on Wednesday at 7:00 instead of at 5:30.
Yeah, we moved it.
Um, I, I just think, listen, this is exactly what we've been asking for, to explain what we need and why, and the fact that our committee that's supposed to talk about this literally meets at the same time they're having this is just to me...
Maybe I can have a conversation, Dr. Lehman, with you to see if we can forego curriculum in, I know we just talked about one big discussion, but that's only gonna happen in February. So, maybe if we can, I think the more of us that can show up there without having a quorum.
Yeah.
But I don't know, if you're physically not in Monroe, is even a quorum?
That's a Mr. Weiss question.
It's a quorum, you can't discuss board business amongst yourselves because it'd have to be in a notice meeting.
So, only, only four of us can.
Well, you could, though, be in the same room and listening to testimony. There's no issue with that.
Each one of us individually gives testimony, that's fine.
Yes, so long as you're not...
We just don't sit next to each other.
So, long as you're not all discussing together in a quorum or more, then it, and then it's fine.
Can I say this?
So, maybe, Ms. Fabiano, we can have this discussion about not doing curriculum and just making sure that more...
Yeah, I think, I think if we can get all, any or all of us, whoever is willing to go there, I think that's great.
And residents.
That's, that's why I wanted to speak, too. The Citizens Advisory Committee at our first meeting, they all mentioned that if we go to Trenton, they want to be there. Whoever was there in the first meeting, they would like to go, too. So, there's your 13 citizens and three students. So, you have us and everybody else.
Perhaps you can ask Ms. Maralta to put it on social media if, you know, because we know residents have said that they would be happy, and we've had people who've gone in the past to budget hearings, but that's for everything, and it's for one year, and see, like, strengthen numbers, maybe as many people as we can get. I have a couple other things for other board business, but...
Yeah, so, we will look at the committee schedule for next month and see what adjustments we can make, but let's hopefully plan to, for us all to try to go to the hearing.
Ms. Fab, can I piggyback on Ms. Ratner?
Uh, she's not done.
Okay.
I'm, I'm almost done.
Regarding legislative things.
Okay, yeah, just really quick, other things I was gonna mention, I know actually, Ms. DePain, you might be harping on this, I won't put too much in there, but there was the Middlesex County Board Meeting that I know Ms. Fabiano, and I attended remotely, and Ms. DePain was there in person. It was a really excellent session, which discussed budget and budget development. It was presented by the Sarerville Administration, and I'll just put a couple of things out there really quick that I really liked. One thing that I mentioned is, similar to how we have a strategic plan that sort of gives us a year-by-year action plan, they have that with their budget, so like one-year, three-year, five-year budget planning. And so, I think we sort of do that, but to have something that's very similar to the strategic plan, you know, as much as we can, was, looked really cool. It also mentioned how with, when they're developing their budget, similar to the budget defense rounds that happen in, in the district with the administration, what they do is they have all of their supervisors come to board meetings and present what their wants, needs, and wants, has are. So, like, they did, you know, schools and curriculum instruction presentations, January 21st, special education athletic presentations, February 3rd, February 18th, building grounds, transportation, February, March 4th, technology personnel, just sort of give the community idea of, you know, what's wanted, what's needed, you know, sort of explain what's happening there, which I thought was a really neat idea. And then, you know, there were definitely other things mentioned there, but it was a great presentation. I think they sent out the materials to everybody.
Yeah, the material was sent out by both, the other person that spoke was Dr. Brian Zakowski, who was a former superintendent from North Brunswick and is now an executive director, I forgot what position, at Kane University, and Sarerville BA and the Sarerville Superintendent were both there. And they were excellent. They gave so many ideas, like Ms. Ratner was saying, when I was on North Brunswick Board, Dr. Zakowski was there, and he said, well, we had our, our budget meeting all day on a Saturday, and it went from 9:00 to 3:00. He said 9:00 to 1:00, maybe because, I think, one of the, their board members said, because he talked past the 1:00 and didn't realize how much he was talking. But we had breakfast, and we had lunch, and we went over line by line by line, and we didn't leave that room that day until we know everything in the budget. So, I mean, if you go on NJS, no, Middlesex County, it was ours, it was Middlesex County School Boards Association, they should have their PowerPoints up there from Dr. Zakowski and the two presenters from Sarerville. It, it was excellent. Tons of questions and a lot of good information, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was basically my report. There's, you know, obviously wonderful events happening around the district. Unified Winter Fest really, like, got to my heart. I've loved it, but, you know, other than that, I think this funding hearing is definitely a priority for us, even though it's happening quickly, we need to get it.
Yeah, it was one of those, I feel like that came out very silently. That was not a very big publicized thing, so I think we need to jump on that. Are there any other board members that have, go ahead, Ms. DePain?
Bills on the move. That was a handout that was given out for the New Jersey School Boards Delegate Assembly. I'm not gonna read them all, because there's like six pages, and I know you don't want to be here that long.
Thank you.
One was on school funding. A4048 requires upcoming educational adequacy reports to include comprehensive review of certain components of school funding in consultation with stakeholders and experts. Now, that is a support of NJSBA, and that should be going through. Another one that I thought you might be interested was elections, and that's A2784, authorizes, I don't know if we've said this already, school districts that move its annual school elections in November to submit separate proposals for additional spending for budget year and subsequent budget year. That's also being supported.
But they haven't.
That hasn't moved yet, though.
It hasn't moved, I'm saying NJSBA supported. There was a couple of important ones, I thought. The rest were on school lunches, safety, but those things actually refer to our, you know, as a board member, but some things that are going through. There was a lot that were opposed, a lot of discussion about opposition, a lot were changed, and I wanted to mention to the public, too, that if there's any teachers, a lot of them left, but it's also policy 3713, which is pushed, was also passed through the Assembly, where stipends will also be pensionable. It's only through the Assembly, so we still have to wait. And I also wanted to say, oh, the Freedom to Read Act, which is A3446, S2471, that was supported with an amend, amendment, and I, I put a note here that I didn't mention before, that will go in effect in December of 2025, but the Board of Education has final authority to remove any material, and that was something that they mentioned that day, too.
Thank you.
Just some interest, and one more? Monroe Ed Foundation?
What if I say no? No, just go ahead.
Monroe Ed Foundation, everybody else spoke a lot, I'm just kidding you. Monroe Ed Foundation has been started up again, and it's wonderful to see the grants given out to the teachers, so well-deserved. This group is trying to raise money, and I just want to encourage anybody in this town. Mr. Poy is working on a tricky tray. He and I are working on a tricky tray for sometime next year, so we'll be looking for help with that. But if you see something sponsored by the Ed Foundation, you should realize that money's going back to your district, to the teachers and to the children. So, please try to support the Ed Foundation, and I think that some of the ones that were presented tonight, we could have them present at a board meeting. I mean, I think we should know, and they could be here, too, the Ed Foundation members, how the teachers are using the money that they were given, so that other teachers will say, hey, you know, we're getting money, let's try to put some more grants in. So, I commend the Ed Foundation members for working as hard as they did, and please, township, support them in anything that they do in the upcoming years, because it's going back to your kids and to your teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Just like we were super happy to see the Monroe Ed Foundation grants come back, I was, I would like to share that we've gone back out to the community for the holiday concerts at the Rosmore. I attended this as a parent, but it brought so much joy, because this is one of the things that our music teachers do very well. You know, for, before COVID, we would go out to a lot of senior communities and do holiday shows, and Rosmore is one that I've been to before. The last one was in 2019, so it was excellent to see the percussion group there, under
under the direction of Mr. Jonah Nack. They did an amazing job. The seniors were very appreciative. They were, it was the Rossmore Music Association. They collect donations and they give scholarships. They did give scholarships last year. So very happy to see that. I also wanted to give a shout out to our student representative, Representative Sahet Chadha, because she did make the New Jersey Youth Senate at the alternate. So it's a great accomplishment. Super proud of her, trailblazer there. We had a few students that just, the day that the Rossmore concert happened, we had a few students that made all Eastern for percussion and for chorus. That all Eastern means, it's not just all state, it's, Dr. Lehman can explain better, but I felt like that was an amazing honor. And tonight, when we were honoring these athletes, I don't know how many of you noticed, but so many times Mr. Berandica announced NJ.com Player of the Year, which so many of them. So I think we are super blessed as a district to have so much talent in our students. And we are able to support them with the work that, you know, all of us give our time and our administrators put in their hard work on. Blessed to be in a district like this. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you're celebrating. I hope you're surrounded by love and family and everybody gets to take some time off in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora. Anybody, any other board members wishing to speak?
I think Dr. Lehman wanted to say something.
Okay, then we are going to move on to our public forum. If there's any members of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening, Shell Arminio 9 Nathaniel Street. I just wanted to let you know, I just came back from the Township Council meeting. And we are starting, the state is going to start talking about our fourth round affordable housing obligation in Monroe. There's a tentative, and I would like, you know, maybe the board members, I know with all of the other activities and documents you must read, there's a 43-page state document that talks about the affordable housing. It is called Fair Housing, I think it's called, and I'm sorry, I left it in my car. Fair Housing Obligation. But you'll find it on the state website. It's 43 pages. And there is a perspective of 751 units for Monroe. Now, I was told by the council attorney that that, that that's not a firm number. However, let's be realistic. We've had 851 affordable housing units on the third round that have not been delivered. And that doesn't mean that's the total number. That's only the total number of affordable housing. What, what the third round is, is four market rate houses to one affordable housing unit. So you multiply the 850 or 851 obligation that we have by four. And that gives you a total of what's going to be built and the kind of construction that's going on in Monroe. We haven't even completed the second round obligation. We haven't completed the third round obligation. I was told at the last prior meeting to the, to the council that we are only 30% delivered on the affordable housing units for the third round. And now they're already talking about the fourth round, and that's, that's construction between 2025 and 2035. So they give it a 10-year range. But we need to be cognizant of that because as we all know, it impacts us. And just from my perspective personally, as much as I believe in the affordable housing necessity, I think that the developers are coming to this town and using that as an excuse to get very, very wealthy and build, yeah, and get, and, and build market rate houses that really give them, that really make a lot of money for them. And we're, we still don't have impact fees. So if we go down and talk about the budget, please include the affordable housing as, bring that up, bring up impact fees. Those are all important to our budget and going forward for our students. So it's, everybody, and, and it's not anyone's fault, but it seems like politicians or whoever is in charge of these things, they try to keep them separate. But it's a big, it's a big macro picture. It is not affordable housing. It is not the budget for the school. It is all the same. And we need to be cognizant and we need to really press the state as to what impact it's going to have in it, in our school system. So I thank you all for the hard work you've been doing. And I'm sorry to give you another 43 pages to read.
I hope you're there.
And I'm gonna, we'll have to see what day it is. I'll have to take off from work. But I'm, I'm still in support of this community and support of our, you know, getting, getting funds for our community. So thank you all for what you do. Happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Do they have any Cliff Notes on that, Ms. Arminio?
I haven't read the 43 pages. They just came in.
If they have Cliff Notes, let us know.
I'll, I'll, I'll read and maybe make an outline for everybody. Not every page is, is significant to, to the Monroe school system. But like I said, 751 is what they're projecting for our obligation, which means multiplied. Now that, now they're saying that instead of a one to four ratio, they may do a one to three ratio. Who knows? Just hold on to your seats.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hello again, Chrissy Skirby Monroe. To piggyback on what Ms. Arminio said, the last demographers report that we did back in '22 had some of those developments listed. But until the builder pulls the permit, the demographer does not include that in the demographers report. So there is a lot of information, like Ms. Arminio said, on the affordable housing, how many are coming. But until the, and, and this is very important for the school districts to realize, until the permits pulled, the demographers reports won't reflect that many houses that are going to be built. So while you think that perhaps you're not going to have a large enrollment, the numbers are kind of skewed because of what the demographer will include in there. It's just something that Ms. Ratner, you had mentioned with that bill that's out there for the funding. You mentioned, you, you said, I don't know how I feel about this. The board does need to come up with how you feel before you go and testify. So are you in support of 7% increase or not? What are you going to be going there to say? I mean, before you go and speak and bring the public, because you might bring the public, and the public might speak against that, because I know people who ran didn't want to go above the 2% cap. If this is raising it 7% without a vote of the public, that's millions and millions of dollars increase. So I think the board, before you go, has to come up with a stance of how you feel. And what are you going to be going down there to testify? Because you can go and ask for money, but that's not what that hearing is for. That hearing is on that bill. And yes, absolutely, let the public know what the board's stance is and invite the public to come down and support it if they, if they support that. But you can't just invite people to come down to speak on a bill without knowing how the board supports it. And just something that Mr. Pirro mentioned before about with the high school and, and the policies. We ran into this when I was on the board. The high school was not following the law for the arts credits. Hundreds of kids for many years graduated without the proper amount of credits for the arts. We didn't know that was going on. The board and the administration set the policy. The policy goes down to the high school. High school creates their program of studies. That is not a document that is approved by the board. Maybe it should be. Maybe while you're having your policy discussions, maybe the discussion is that the board should start approving the program of studies and reviewing that, because your names are on it. Your name's on the first page of the program of studies. And that sets the policies for the high school. So the high school has a document of their own policies that now we're seeing isn't the same as the board policy. So while you're discussing this in curriculum and in policy, perhaps that becomes a discussion too of the board taking an active role in approving that program of studies. Because you could set the policies, you don't know if they're being followed. And like Ms. Bora said, a parent spoke up to say the policy was not being followed. It got brought to the administration, it sounded like. They brought Dr. Higgins to the policy meeting and he said, well, it was a board mistake. Based on what? So while you say the, the administration should be making sure they're following the policy, the administrator came and said, well, it was just a mistake. That's not, that, that wasn't the policy and that shouldn't be the policy. Our procedure should be the policy. And, and you got to watch out for that because that goes down a slippery slope. Procedure isn't the policy. The policy that the board votes on and is there in the policy manual is what the policy is. Until you change that as a board, that is what should, would stick, not what a procedure is. The procedure should be based on the policy. And when it's not, you have to go back to what the policy says. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Once again, Dr. Poy, Monroe Township. Item Q under Superintendent's Report. It's, you approved a settlement agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association. My question is, members of the public, are we allowed to know, to know anything about the details of that, excuse me, of that, of that settlement agreement?
It, it depends. It depends on what the settlement agreement says. If it deals with funding, I would say yes. But if it deals with matters of a personal personnel nature, perhaps not. It, it really depends. And as far as that item in particular.
This one right here? It didn't get to your level. It was, but it was a personnel. Yeah, it was, it's an agreement.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. I'm not familiar with that particular issue. So I, I can't provide you a syn, a synopsis of it right now. But I'm happy to do that going forward.
Well.
It was a, it was a personnel matter.
It's a personnel matter of a personal nature.
Okay.
I'd have to parse some words to, in order to figure out.
Sure. Okay. All right. I do want to thank the various members of the board who thanked the Education Foundation for the grants that we were able to make this year. And I particularly want to thank Ms. DePaine for asking you to support the Education Foundation. We are trying to revitalize this organization. It does benefit the students and the teachers of the district. It affords funds which are not provided through the regular school budget. But I do want to thank you for your support, and we will look forward to that support in the coming years. I also want to thank the members of the board for the time and the energy that you put in, not only in your meetings, but in the other things that you go to and attend, so that you will be better informed and better equipped to work for the benefit of the district. And I wish you all a, a good holiday season and a healthy new year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poy. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. We are not, I lost my page, don't need a second closed session. So we are going to go to our next scheduled Board of Education meeting date, which is January 15th, 2025. I can't believe it's going to be 2025 already. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays to all.